Great, thank you. All right, if we can go ahead and start the recordings on, thank you. So I'd like to call this joint school board and Anchorage Assembly meeting to order. Before we go to the roll call, I'd like to take a minute to have a moment of silence in honor of all the lives lost on September 11th. Thank you. So let's go ahead and do a roll call. Ms. Jones, if you can do a roll call for Assembly members?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Felix Rivera.
Present.
Austin Quinn Davidson.
Here.
Jamie Allard.
Here.
Christopher Constant.
Here.
Forrest Dunbar.
Here.
Crystal Kennedy. Suzanne LaFrance. Cameron Perez Verdia. Pete Peterson.
Present.
John Weddleton. Meg Zalatell.
Here.
You have a quorum of Assembly members, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I believe it's Miss Grant, if you could do the roll call for school board members, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Member Vicalis.
Here.
Member Bellamy.
Present.
Member Donley.
Here.
Member Hildy. And I do know that Member Hildy is on the line, she may just be having trouble unmuting. Member Holloman?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm here.
Member Holloman?
Present.
Member Marsette?
Here.
And Member Mitchell?
Present.
We do have all board members present, thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, the pledge of allegiance. Member Mitchell, if you could lead us in the pledge, please?
I don't know if you can see me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Member Mitchell. So, want to note for the record that we've been joined by Assembly Member LaFrance and Assembly Member Perez Verdia. And actually just want to confirm, Assembly Member Perez Verdia, if you could just unmute yourself, just to make sure that you are here. Okay, I'll work on those. Desiree, if we could work with Mr. Perez Verdia, please, on whatever issues that he is facing. Also want to note that we're joined by Assembly Member John Weddleton as well. Next, we have the land acknowledgements. Actually, I was hoping Assembly Member Perez Verdia would be able to do that, so I'll open it to him one more time. Otherwise, I'll likely go to Vice Chair Quinn Davidson to lead us in the land acknowledgement.
I'm happy to do it if Cameron isn't available.
Okay, not hearing Assembly Member Perez Verdia, then we'll go ahead and Vice Chair Quinn Davidson, if you can go ahead and lead us in that.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. A land acknowledgement is a formal statement recognizing the indigenous people of a place. It is a public gesture of appreciation for the past and present indigenous stewardship of the lands that we now occupy. It is an actionable statement that marks our collective movement toward decolonization and equity. The Anchorage Assembly and Anchorage School Board would like to acknowledge that we gather today on the traditional lands of the Denneena Apabaskins. For thousands of years, the Denneena have been and continue to be the stewards of this land. It is with gratefulness and respect that we recognize the contributions, innovations, and contemporary perspectives of the upper Cook Inlet Denneena. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair Quinn Davidson. Desiree, I put this in the chat, but if you could please email out the team's link for members to join in. I think some of the members are in the public version and not in the team's link live event. Thank you. So with that, we're going to move on to minutes of previous meetings. So we have the minutes of the meeting of June 12th, 2020. Ms. Jones, are these minutes that we usually approve?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of June 12th?
So move. Member Zalatell.
Second, Member Constant.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on these minutes? Is there any opposition to approval of these minutes? Okay, hearing none, then the minutes from the meeting of June 12th, 2020 are approved. Next, we have approval of the agenda. So last night, I had a chance to have a discussion with President Vicalis about the agenda and if the body is in agreement, just based on some of the various emails that the both bodies have received concerning the time of these meetings. The two of us would like to add a new 7A, so we would push the other matters in the sevens down, a discussion on the time of these meetings and place, if that's also an interest of the body. But otherwise, are there any other additions to the agenda? Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Move, by Member Constant.
Second, Quinn Davidson.
Moved and seconded. Is there any objection to approval of the agenda as amended? Okay, hearing none, then the agenda is approved. So we're going to go ahead and move on to initial audience participation with a maximum of three individuals for this audience participation, with the acknowledgement that we do have a final audience participation at the end of our meeting. Desiree, can you guide me through how we're going to do this?
I believe we have one person, Barbara, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we have the one individual, which is Mr. Haberman, and he can unmute himself.
Mr. Haberman, are you with us?
And he is, you can star six yourself to unmute from a phone.
Hear me?
Yes, hearing and I, Mr. Haberman. You will have three minutes, welcome.
Okay, thank you. I'll start my timer. My name is Eugene Carl Haberman, I'm known as the South Point government watchdog. I'll be brief and also in reference to the meeting. One issue of concern and continues to be, and I addressed this way before COVID, you still have meetings of the school board and assembly meetings happening in the same night. It's not all the time, but it's still occurring. And I pleaded with you over a year ago to not do this, and nothing's changed, and this is becoming a problem. And particularly in the COVID period, it's even more to have a conversation with the people. But the end result is when you have your meeting the same night, the public cannot be connected. Also note this, the assembly chambers are now open at the regular for public to be there with a limited number. But the school board scenario is, as way I understand it, is still closed. Now, the school board closed up when the mayor announced to close numbers on meetings. And then the assembly opened up last week on Monday, but the situation with the school board is still closed. They need to reopen, you need to connect with the people more appropriately, and by this distance is not working. The other thing is, I did review the packet before this meeting, and there was, I believe, 57 or whatever, a section reference to, like, June 12th or whatever, forgive me. I'm afraid to switch over to that document and I'll lose you, but it talked about a sizable number of masks and so forth that the school district sent out to help with the medical providers and all that in Alaska. But has that been rebrought? What is the supply dealing with the masks and so forth with the school district? Because we're seeing that in a report in June, that it was donated out, and there's an unknown quality of supply there, and that concerns me. And I'll remind you the history of this whole thing of mask wearing. Initially, when, back in March, the public was told nationally, okay, supply the medical providers, but the people forgot about them, the public itself, that was a priority. So are we going back to the same scenario, we're forgetting about supplying for people who need to, need also? And that needs to be brought out at this meeting. And how much time do I have left here? I guess I've got 17 seconds, but I plead with you to reopen, okay, the school board, and then have a connection that way. And thank you, I wish you all the best, and I'll listen attentively to your meeting, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Haberman, for your participation. Is there anyone else for initial audience participation? Okay, not hearing anyone else. We will still have the final audience participation at the end of our meeting, so I'll open it up again at that point. So let's go ahead and move on to item 5A on our agenda, ASD COVID-19 response for 2020, 2021 school year, including school start update. Who is presenting?
Hi, this is Elisa Vicalis, President of the School Board, I'll just go ahead and kick it off just real briefly. I just wanted to let everybody, the board and the assembly, know that we had put out this white paper that has responses to 5A and 5B and, you know, some of the things that are ASD presentation side of things. So a lot of the information is already in there, hope everybody has had a chance to read it. I am going to turn this over to Dr. Bishop to, you know, touch on any of the high points that she wants to point out and be available to answer any questions regarding what is in this white paper for any assembly members or board members along the way. So at this time, I will turn it over to Dr. Bishop.
Thank you, Madam President and Assembly Chair Rivera. I thank you for the opportunity to speak to you, and the white paper, just so everyone knows, came about due to the robust discussions we've had at meetings where we run out of time for the latter things on the agenda. So hopefully, this gets the basis of information and creates dialogue and really digs down into the information that the assembly would like to know most, most of all. I do have some team members here with me that will share specifically on items, data items such as enrollment, the technology, things like that. But recently, which is not in this document, as we shared this and had a discussion with the school board on Tuesday night, is the biggest thing on folks' minds is when and how can we get back into school, into school? And when will that be a choice? We, of course, have a school start task force that has been established, as well as a community task force, if you will, that also provides feedback. And in the planning now are the details, but I can share that the first efforts will be to bring elementary students back in first. We would like to phase this in with elementary students, would be additional students in grades, middle school and high school, that are special education, high need students. And so we're looking at those transition plans now and mitigating for the risks involved in face-to-face instruction. We are planning, and our plans do include small groupings of students, utilizing the cohort model. Certainly, in elementary school, students move less around the building, and they only generally move around the building with an adult with them. And this is not true for high schools. So we are, with that, looking at an announcement on September 15th to go out to our community and our parents in regard to the plans forward. Specifically, the questions that have been asked are on the mitigation protocols such as wearing masks. We are requiring masks, as well as ensuring that social distancing occurs. To do that, we do have to make some adjustments in our class sizes, and those are happening now and being studied now. One of the biggest trials we've had since the beginning of the year is the registration process in that generally, we have the majority of our students register prior to the school year, but with the unknowns. A lot of our families registered right before the beginning of the school. And of course, there were a lot of choices associated with going back to school. From school in school, which was our blended model that happens to be online, just because we experienced the high risk. Otherwise, that would have been in a medium risk and possibly in school at the beginning of the year. We also have the ASD virtual and ASD homeschool programs that are offered. Each one offers a choice to parents for asynchronous or synchronous learning, traditional at-home curriculum or correspondence curriculum. And so as parents took their time to really weigh their family needs with their work needs and childcare needs, that really pushed the enrollment and understanding where students would land very close. And so we've experienced the first couple of weeks especially, more disruption in movement of teachers and students from classes than we had in prior years, simply because we offered those choices. We really wanted to honor those, but the outcome of that was the enrollment and classes needed to be adjusted. With that, also wanted to share that we, again, do look to transitioning into in-school. We did start up sports, as you know, it's been announced. We were in concert again with the city officials, state officials, as well as the mayor's office in sharing this understanding and how we would operate. Again, it is to identify and articulate and build confidence that we can have student groups meeting with mitigation techniques in process and ensure the safety of staff and students. The major limitation on those is the audience participation, if you will, or audience spectator participation, rather, at events, those are generally closed off, limited ticketing. And it was shared with me, a concern that really, when someone looks out in the stands at a football game, there's quite a few open spaces. Why couldn't we do more? Perhaps we can look at that, but really, the ability for staff to monitor and to ensure the safety of students and staff and other families is really a part of that. What we can monitor to ensure that the protocols are actually in effect is also part of our planning. Our next group that we're bringing in is a voluntary reading support pilot. We're starting it at about seven schools to open it up district-wide in conjunction with in-school learning as we move there. We know that we need to double down on the fundamental skills that are gained in the early years of education from pre-K to 3. So we are starting that as well, the week of September 28th, again, to build confidence and competency and the resolve that we can do this with proper mitigation in our schools. Training will be required for all staff. Some of the concerns from staff are that, how do we ensure that other staff and our colleagues are following the same? And we all know that I wear my mask to protect you, and you wear your mask to protect me. And so we have, in the next four weeks, a series of trainings, video trainings, and workshops that principals will work through with their teachers to ensure that we have confidence in being able to return to school with the utmost safety in mind. I will be available for questions, there's just so much to share with you. Again, a formal announcement with detailed information will be out to our families in the community on September 15th. We're continuing to receive, again, the feedback from the board last Tuesday, as well as the school start task force and others being able to weigh in and vet the different concerns that are out there in the community, not only with our families, but with our own staff. We want our workforce of 6,000 to know that we've done our best with the mitigation necessary, including the PPE necessary to, we just heard that by a member, an audience member, that ASD is prepared, and we actually purchased special PPE that educators preferred, especially our primary, called the Humanity Shield, so their entire face can be seen and not covered with a mask. So that, as you know, whether it's hard of hearing or just young children learning how to form letters with their mouths, and blended letters then, to be able to read and sound out words. Sometimes, we absolutely need to see our instructors and our teachers' lips, and so that's part of our processes for PPE that are in the schools. We are presently testing, special education testing in our schools. So our teachers, many of our teachers are already teaching from their classrooms. Offices are being run at present in the offices. And I know President Vicalis made looks to move our board meetings back into the boardroom. We did have our board meetings live and in person until the emergency ordinance came out that restricted that. But at this time, just for a brief enrollment update, as well as the financial impact of our enrollment, I'm going to turn this over to Jim Anderson, the Chief Financial Officer, thank you.
Dr. Bishop, this is Katie, I'm so sorry to interrupt. I believe that Jim Anderson is having a hard time getting
Okay, then I can do that update, so I would like to share, thank you, we can pivot very quickly. I'll share our update, I have those documents in front of me. To share, the district is approximately, we had about 501 students that unenrolled from the district, and we have approximately 3,000 record requests. 1,855 moved to a statewide correspondence program outside of ASD. Primarily, those statewide programs, our Raven and IDEA picked up the lion's share of the students. Consequently, I was on a call this morning with Kenai Borough School District Juno Matsu, and very similar reductions in their student populations. All of us are experiencing between 8 and 10% reduction, primarily to statewide correspondence. 443 students moved to other districts in Alaska, including 300 that did go to Matsu. 425 moved out of the state. That's where we can actually track where we sent the records to. And 308 moved to private schools here in the Anchorage area. And when we have a reduction in students, we have a reduction in the planned budgeted revenue. And the reduction will occur in three areas, the overall general fund, which is the state and the lion's share, really the state and local monies that go into our budget. This includes the intensive needs revenue, which is more specific to actually programs that we provide for students. In addition, the Student Transportation Fund is a separate fund, but it also is generated by the number of students in a district. So overall, the enrollment appears to meet the Hold Harmless Clause and provision in state statute, and which will dampen the loss of the foundation revenue, though the district will lose both the state and local funds due to that. The intensive needs students decline will reduce also with the anticipated revenue, both at the state and local level. Again, the transportation is tied to student count, and when student count goes down, that fund is also affected. The projected impact on the district funds, if enrollment numbers do not grow and do not change, it's approximately 14 million in operations and 2 million in transportation. Additionally, we have within our system funds that we've received, however, they're going to be redirected within our system to homeschools or charter schools or the choice schools. So again, the budget impact is on people moving to different entities. But primarily, the loss from the state and local revenue, again, at the state level and local level, 14 million, followed by the 2 million in transportation. The other 10 million, which was reported at our last board meeting for 26 million, was actually funds that are received but adjusted to other accounts such as charter schools and homeschools. Those certainly receive a different amount of money. Specifically, correspondence homeschool is about 10% of less than the general fund right off the BSA. In addition, no multipliers such as special education or CTE count in that fund. So the complications of the funding formula at the state just changes the amount of funds received. With that, I'm not sure if Jim Anderson was able to log in, but if he's here, he can also answer any questions.
Dr. Bishop, I got in.
Great. If there aren't any questions now, we can certainly move, just handle, if you'd like us to speak about technology, the support for mental behavioral health that we're working on, any of these items that we can speak more in depth. I would, our board certainly likes dialogue time to have with you, so any other updates that we can provide, please let us know, we can speak to. Otherwise, we'll just turn it over to the CARES Act funding Chair Rivera.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. So if members from either body would like to get in the chat, to get in the queue, that'd be great. If you don't have access to the chat to put yourself in the queue, just text me, I believe everyone should have my number, and I will manually add you into the chat, so you're in the queue. I have a couple of questions here, so first, I have Assembly Member LaFrance.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Dr. Bishop, for the report to the Assembly. and also your report in person. Can you go back to the Hold Harmless Clause you mentioned and just summarize that again? Thanks.
That's a great question. Thank you. That's a great question. And Jim Anderson can speak to that. I guess fortunately, unfortunately. Unfortunately, we lost students, but they did come into a level that would trigger a Hold Harmless Clause in regard to the amount of reduction in revenue. And Jim can speak to how that works. Jim?
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. So the very first step of the school funding formula is school size. The way the Hold Harmless works is from last year to this year, if you lost 5% or more of the students, and we're about 9%, then you get to hold harmless 75% of the state funding in that first step. And then it continues on through the rest of the steps. So you still take a loss, but you don't take 100% of the loss. Is that clearer?
And to share also that, Mr. Anderson, does that Hold Harmless Clause move into the next year at all?
It does, but next year it would be 50%.
Thank you.
Thank you. That does help. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Member LaFrance. Next, I have Assemblymember Constant.
Yeah, thank you. Hold on, let me do this part like I was asked. Hi, everybody. I am hoping to get a copy of these numbers and this kind of content in a brief that you can email to us. If you did send that, I'm sorry I missed it, but I would definitely like to have this in some form of a report.
Thank you, Member Constant. I guess to confirm, was this all this information? Dr. Bishop, was that in the white paper?
Yes, under ASD enrollment. And if you need any particular follow-up, we are happy to follow up with you.
Thanks. I'll review it more closely and get in touch if I have more questions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Okay, so I am next in the queue. So my question was related to disparities. So I know that, you know, we've talked a lot in these meetings about disparities of certain parts of our population in terms of educational achievement and attainment. And, you know, I think it's become obvious that COVID-19 has the potential to further increase those disparities. And I know that's been top of mind and top of priority for the school board and the school administration. I'm just wondering, I guess, two things. So one, how is the school district going to track that? And then two, is there any sort of preliminary thoughts or information that the school district has to share on any sort of further increase in educational achievement disparities for parts of our student population? Thanks.
Madam President, would you like me to respond?
All right. I'll take that. So we are looking at those disparities and we... The difficulty is in assessing students and knowing where they are. However, we did have and ran through, we don't have a tabulated result report yet, but on a system called iReady, which assesses students from home, it's not a perfect system, but it gives us some data. A couple of the things that I mentioned were actually as a result of understanding the needed equity that we need to consider. One of those is that we are finding that our students who decided to stay in school, in the in-school program that once it moves from online back into the classroom, that we call that ASD in-school. However, it's confusing now because we're literally not in school because of the high risk, but we look to transition. That we are finding in some of our lower socioeconomic neighborhoods where schools are located, we actually have higher class counts where parents chose to stay with the school system. We have an ASD virtual program, which we have found parents that have more flexibility in their day, have an ability to stay home or to teach, have chosen that. So some of the classrooms in different parts of our town are at different levels. That's why I'm communicating and prepping that we're going to have to do and continue to do adjustments into our staffing and classroom numbers for a couple of weeks to come. Generally, after two weeks of school, we're settled down. It hasn't happened that way yet because we, again, a lot of the registrations came in later than expected. So that's one way that we're meeting equity needs to ensure that classes are small where we can. Additionally, the first schools being serviced, our schools with the reading program, the tutorial, which will be an onsite, parents can send their kids by September 28th, we're focusing that on highest areas of need for equity. And so the first schools that are participating did identify a number of students that would benefit from that direct instruction, that reading engagement, having a good afternoon with in-school. We're considering transportation and food service along with those services, understanding that those supports, wraparound supports will also support students in their learning, even during that tutorial. We are looking at... If you take a look at the technology, the school board voted to ensure that all students, 3 through 12, are one-to-one and any students below that grade level who have a need in their family for online learning will receive a Chromebook. Again, I share, those of you that know about Chromebooks, they're great for doing schoolwork. They're not gaming computers, so kids, you know, it's not the kind of computer that you might think does a lot of other wonderful things. This is a learning tool and we've so far, thus far, it's in the report, have dispersed about 21,000, almost 22,000 of those Chromebooks. We have another 10,000 to be dispersed over the next couple of weeks. The supply chain was a little slow and we just received those this week. What we're doing is, again, families of need received first. And then we went to, because we didn't have them all in, if you needed them, you received it first. Families that could share a computer, families that didn't immediately need a computer, were not first on the list, but those equity needs, of course, occurred initially. Part of the CARES money that is next on the agenda, but also in addition to the one-to-one, the school board was... It was evident with equity in mind, wanting to be able to provide connectivity to our families. Chair Rivera, there is a deep divide, as you know, in the ability of families in different parts of our town to have connectivity. It's not a matter of it being accessed like some of our neighbors and other school districts in Bush, Alaska, not just not having the speed. The speed is there, but we don't have the means to get it. And so over $1 million of the CARES money has been devoted to connectivity. And again, that is being provided by a needs base based on ensuring the equity of our families. Those are just a few things off that I know that are built, kind of baked into the report a little bit to pull them out. But without specifically stating them, they might not be seen as those really systemic changes that we're making to ensure that our families' needs are met. I can... If there's any other questions specifically, but those are just a general overview of that. But absolutely, we will see a learning disparity and our goal is to mitigate that, to ensure that we can make up for it. Again, so even when school is back face-to-face, our reading, learning, tutoring that will extend a student's day is going to continue to meet that primary Paramount Board goal of having all students read by third grade.
Great. Thank you so much for all of the work that you're doing on that. Next, I have Assemblymember Dunbar. Assemblymember Dunbar?
Sorry. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I have two questions for you, Madam Superintendent. First is, your CARES Act distribution, is it paid out in a similar way to ours? In that ours comes in three batches and you have to spend 80% of the first in order to get access to the other two. And related to that, how... Do you have anything left in reserve? So that's my first question. I have another question about the special needs community. If you could answer that one first.
Sure. Thank you. That's a great question. And I know that we have a little bit more flexibility than you do with the CARES money. And although that is 5B on there, would you... Chair Rivera, would you like us to move into that area? Because those two questions, the one on reserves, certainly our Jim Anderson, Chief Financial Officer, is here to answer. But we could also cover that at the desire of the chair.
Yeah. Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Assemblymember Dunbar, if you're okay with that, could we address that first question when we get to the CARES Act funding discussion?
Sure. So my second question then is about, and it's related to what Chair Rivera asked about disparities, but also demographics of the people that are being... That are pulling their students out of school in one way or another, or they're shifting to some other alternate model. For the special needs community, have you found that they are more likely, less likely, or the same in terms of whether or not they're being taken out of traditional school? And if so, why do you think those trends exist?
That's a great question, Assemblymember Dunbar. And I would have to do a little bit more examination of exactly whom is moving. I did see that some of those records requests were to correspondence programs for our special... Our high-end intensive special needs students. And we would have to research that. I would want to speak to our Executive Director of Special Education who's tracking that, so we can do a report for you to be specific. But you also had a question during this time that we can answer on our fund balance. So if you would like Jim to answer that real fast, we could also do that. I will follow up on your special education question.
Thank you.
Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Member Dunbar, our CARES Act money was not...
Go ahead, Mr. Anderson.
The... I'm sorry.
Mr. Anderson, it's not on the CARES Act. It's on the fund balance of the school district, was the other question. Do we have fund balance? Do we continue to have fund balance?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, we do continue to have fund balance. We started this year at the beginning of the fiscal year at about 10%. Part of that, about 8.3 million, so about 1.5% is dedicated towards supporting COVID and a number of other things. But we do, at this point, still have fund balance to continue operations.
And we can provide those exact numbers to the assembly in the report that we have a follow-up with this meeting.
Thank you. Did you have anything further, Mr. Dunbar?
Not this time. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll address your other question when we get to the CARES Act funding discussion. Last in the queue, I have Assemblymember Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mine is in regard to funding too. So if you want me to wait on this, I certainly can because I think it might be a question more directed to Mr. Slivka. But my question in regard to... Is in regard to our local contribution and how that may or may not be impacted by the Hold Harmless Clause. I'm assuming that everything that's related to our local contribution amount basically starts from the level that the school district is funded. So if they're held harmless technically, so would the municipality's portion. So is that a fair assessment? And again, I don't have a question for Mr. Anderson or Dr. Bishop or Mr. Slivka, but whoever wants to take that one. Thanks.
Yes, I can answer that. As state funding drops and Anchorage was already at the maximum amount allowable, then the corresponding drop, if we had 75% Hold Harmless, so we lost about 25% of the difference for the number of students that we have less than last year, then there would be a drop naturally in the local contribution as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I'll open it up one more time. If there are any other questions from either body on this topic before we move on. Okay. Not hearing any, then we're going to go ahead and move on to next topic on our agenda, 5B ASD Report on Usage of CARES Act Funding. I'll turn it over to the school district.
Thank you. And what we have prepared is basically the CARES Act Funding Memo for which the board approved and President Vakalis and the board can share. Jim will provide the data. And then if you have any questions, President Vakalis can monitor those. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson, if you can go through some of the CARES Act funding questions or highlights that have been requested?
Yes, President Vakalis. Thank you. So we put in the white paper how we use the CARES Act funds. Our funds were a little bit different than the way the Muni received it in that we got one allotment of just over $12 million. And I think we sent something to the assembly a couple of weeks ago as well. So you can see that we use our CARES Act funds for elementary health teachers, information technology and curriculum really were the large majority of where the funding went, especially as we prepared for online and virtual classes this fall. We also used a significant amount for PPE, everything from gloves to humanitarian face shields, other mass disinfectant supplies. And at this time, although we haven't spent all of the money that is planned for PPE, once we open up the doors and students start coming through the schools, our costs will increase. So at this time, it appears we will use 100% of the CARES Act funds before the end of this fiscal year. If there are any questions?
So just for Member Dunbar's question, we did not have... Our ability to spend continues through the entire school year, whereas the assembly's funds ended at the calendar year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Assuming there are no further presentations on this topic, are there any questions from either body or discussion from either body on usage of CARES Act funding? Mr. Assemblymember LaFrance?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a related question and it concerns the bond debt reimbursement. I understand that for next year, it's estimated to be an uncovered difference of about $41 million. And I know that the school district is looking at different options and ultimately, this may just be something that the taxpayers pick up. I understand that the governor had looked at using CARES Act money to fill these gaps. And my question is, I understand that there may be some options through the CARES Act program for restructuring bond debt. And if so, can somebody speak to that? If that's something being considered now? Or if, you know, there are any other plans underway for how to deal with that gap, which I realize doesn't fall necessarily directly under the CARES Act funding piece per se? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Through the chair to Member LaFrance. The bond debt reimbursement, when the governor vetoed 100% last spring, it did put a $41 million deficit in the state revenue coming to us to cover the bond debt this year. To my knowledge, CARES Act funds were not allowed to supplant revenue shortfalls. And I'm not sure there are other options right now, other than an increase in taxes. Unless stimulus two, which hopefully will be coming out in the next couple of months, has less strings attached into how those funds can be used. I think everyone's tracking in DC that it's currently, was moving back and forth, and now it seems to have stalled.
Thank you, Mr. Roth, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. France. Are there any further questions or discussion on this topic? Yes, School Board Member Marsette.
I wanted to mention too, when we're talking about our fund shortage, one of the things the Board is doing is we are putting together a resolution asking for some consideration in the state as we proceed with our student count, and maybe doing that a little differently, that will help us reclaim some of that loss, if they are able to do that. And so we are working on that resolution now to present to the legislation. So that is one other way that, I mean, it doesn't come up with the dollars, but hopefully it will promote or have others to help not only our district, but other districts with this challenge that we have with our student count.
Thank you, Member Marsette. Okay, not seeing any other individuals in the queue. Thank you for the presentation and update. We're going to go ahead and move on to our next item on the agenda, under Capital Improvement Needs, Item 6A, upcoming construction projects, with the school district presenting.
Thank you. At this time, and a lot of these items, again, they are in the white paper, but I'll go ahead and ask Mr. Tom Roth, our COO, if he could just, please do a quick overview and be available to answer questions for any members that have them.
Thank you, President Vekalas. And through the Chair, my name's Tom Roth, I'm the Chief Operating Officer. And I'm happy to provide an overview. As the Board President mentioned, we did include a lot of details in the white paper. But I just want to say, it's actually been a very good construction season for the Anchorage School District. And that was really due to two primary factors. One was that we had a longer construction season because of the early start of the school year, but also just because of the weather conditions that we've been able to, you know, favorable weather conditions that we've been able to sustain this work, you know, throughout the summer period. I do want to highlight that our two Eagle River schools, Greenie Middle School and Eagle River Elementary, which were damaged significantly during the earthquake and were not brought back online, those two schools, I'm happy to report are currently active repair. And because of their situation, their student body situation, that we're going to be able to continue work in those schools until we're able to bring students and staff back into them. I also just want to highlight, since our last meeting, just a very brief FEMA update, you may be cognizant. So we, the district did receive confirmation from FEMA, that FEMA did approve the waiver request submitted by the Director of Insurance, specifically to waive the requirement for the obtain and maintain earthquake insurance. And what this does for the district, it really does open up our ability to receive public assistance for earthquake-specific repair damages, which right now we assess to be about $50 million potential. So that's my update. Again, I am happy to entertain any questions at this time.
Great. Thank you for that update. Are there any questions or discussion from either body on this topic? Okay, we're moving right along. So seeing no discussion, we'll go ahead and move on to the next agenda item. So we're now at Other Matters of Mutual Concern. So first, we have the new agenda topic that was added, discussion around the time of our meeting. This was, again, as a reminder, a discussion topic that was added after consultation between President Vekalas and I, as both bodies have received various communications stating concern about the time of the meeting. So at this point, I'll just open it up to the bodies, both of them, to see if there are any thoughts on this. And as I've stated before, I serve at the pleasure. So if there are any thoughts, both President Vekalas and I can take that and make adjustments as needed to the timing. So at this point, I'll open it up, if there are any members who want to add discussion on this. Assemblymember LaFrance?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just so I'm clear, you're asking about discussion concerning when these quarterly meetings are held?
That is correct.
Okay, so I do have a question. And I was wondering if someone, and I'm not sure who it would be, might be able to speak to the reasoning behind when the meetings were scheduled during the day? And, I mean, I'm just assuming there are only so many with community council meetings, and school board meetings, and assembly meetings, and, you know, trying to keep meetings off of the weekend, that there are just not a whole lot of options for evenings. But I certainly would support rescheduling the meetings to a time that, you know, the public feels like they have better participation. But I understand that has implications for staff as well. But if someone could speak to maybe the rationale as to why the meetings are held on, you know, Friday morning, that would be great. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. President Vekalas, I see that. Do you want to speak to this?
I'll take a quick shot at it, only to say, just kind of from our conversation last night, that as I'm, you know, in the middle of my sixth year as a school board member, the why is really, it's because it's always been done. I'm not even sure how long going back before me that this has been in place this way. And I echo Chair Rivera's sentiments, you know, I serve at the pleasure, and if, you know, the will is to move this. But your comment, Member LaFrance, is right on, that we do a lot of evening, you know, community councils and other public events, you know, with our community. So the options are open, you know, something to be considered might be four o'clock, you know, on, you know, like a midweek, you know, late afternoon, or something like that, that doesn't conflict with board or assembly meetings. I'm not sure what those would look like on a calendar, but, you know, maybe something a little later in the day, but not to affect staff or something like that. So just throwing out ideas and options, wanted to certainly open up the discussion with the members of both bodies, just to see where folks stood. Don't know where it came from, but we certainly have the option to change where it goes from here. Thank you.
Thank you, President.
Thank you, President Vekalas. And then at this point, I'd open it up to see if there are staff from either the Assembly or the school district who would like to also respond to Assemblymember LaFrance's question. Not hearing any further response. I think President Vekalas sort of hit the nail on the head there. I'll go ahead and move on to the next individual in the queue. And I guess just to repeat, so for folks who want to get in the queue, it's through the chat function. If you can't access the chat function, then please text me, and I will manually add you into the queue. So the next individual I have is School Board Member Mitchell.
Thank you. And I just wanted to reiterate, I mean, I think that President Vekalas basically said what I was going to say, which is that late afternoon, I think, would be a good option, because we still have staff on the clock, and it would allow at least teachers to participate if they would like to. But evenings, I think, could be problematic for all the issues raised. So, but if there's a free evening available, I'm open to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Mitchell. So I'll go ahead and open it up one more time, see if there's any further discussion on this topic. Assemblymember LaFrance?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to add that I love the idea of maybe meeting at 4:00 PM, and think that's something we should consider. Thanks.
Thank you. Assemblymember Quinn Davidson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have a problem with meeting at 4:00. I'm happy to meet anytime. As other members know, we're working around the clock, including evenings, all the time. So to me, I can do it anytime. I just wanted to weigh in that I don't know that doing it during the late afternoon during business hours would help, because most of the complaints I received were that it's not in the evening. So I'm fine with trying 4:00 PM, but I'm just throwing that out there.
Thank you. Again, I welcome any additional comments. Like earlier, both President Vekalas and I, after this discussion offline, we will work together to do as these two bodies have suggested. So next, I have Assemblymember Allard.
Thank you, appreciate it. I agree. I think that the public wants to be more in tune and be able to have, join the meeting, I guess, after they get off work. So I'm supportive of that. And like Assemblywoman Quinn Davidson said, we're kind of working around the clock anyway, so I'll push that in my schedule, and I have no problem with it at all. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Assemblymember Allard. Assemblymember Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I'm going to chime in too, and just say that, you know, if it makes it more convenient some way for the public, I think it's very interesting that literally these meetings have been going on for decades, and the public never really attends. So maybe that's because they are at the time that they are. But there's really never even been a question, like I've seen, you know, in the emails recently. So, so anyway, but with that in mind, you know, if we do need to find an evening, I'm okay with that too. But I will say that, I mean, my first meeting like this, I attended in 2003. So I know it's been going on at 10:00, you know, quarterly since then. But anyway, whatever works, you know, to try to get everybody a better chance to participate. One thing I think the public needs to know, though, when we do this, is that really this is an informational meeting. We're not really, you know, the school board's not making any official decisions, and really neither is the Assembly. These are all kind of just collaborative ways of trying to figure out kind of how to move forward. But the information as a whole, I think, is always really valuable. And that's probably what the public really wants to be able to have access to. So however we can do that, it's a helpful thing. Thanks.
Thank you, Assemblymember Kennedy. Okay. I'm going to go ahead, actually, Assemblymember LaFrance, if you want to go ahead and read that comment, please.
Oh, thanks, Felix. I was just saying, maybe we could split the difference and do 5:00 PM, you know, like we do for assembly meetings. I just don't want to miss community council meetings at night. That's a concern. And that is sometimes it's easier, you know, to get off work, like at 4:00 PM, depending on flexibility, depending on shift, at one end of the day or other, it's sometimes easier. Thanks.
Thank you, Assemblymember LaFrance. And School Board Member Mitchell did ask a question in the chat. Are these meetings recorded for the public to listen to afterward? And the answer to that is yes, they are. I guess also in response to that, we did receive some individuals from the public who, even though that is an option, they would still prefer to be able to listen live to these meetings and participate live versus listening to the recording afterward. But yes, all of our meetings are available via a recording of the meeting after. Okay, seeing no further discussion on this topic, I'm going to go ahead and move us on then to our three remaining items. So first is climate change, and that is an Assembly presents item. So as this body knows, this is an item that I've wanted to continually add onto our agenda, regardless of whether I have much to add or not. And in this case, I don't have much to add, other than to say that the Assembly is getting fairly close, I'm hoping in the next month or so, of getting a final recommendation from the Youth Advisory Commission on a new youth representative to the Assembly, and an alternate. Once those two positions are in place, I think that will help kickstart this conversation, which, as members will remember, was incumbent on the youth representative and the Youth Advisory Commission, sort of taking charge and helping lead this conversation, and the formation of some type of youth advisory climate change council. So once that position comes in, I will engage them in this conversation, and hopefully have a more substantive update for everyone in December. Seeing no discussion on that item, we'll go ahead and move on to the 2020 census. We'll start with a presentation from the school district, I believe, by Ms. Sonia Hunt.
Good morning. Our census update is pretty quick and high level. Just as an update in terms of the data, we are at, nationwide, we are at a self-response rate of about almost 66%. Alaska, in terms of our self-response rate and not enumeration, we are at about 53.4%. In terms of Anchorage, we have seen a small uptick, and we are now at 66.5%. Keep in mind that 10 years ago, at about this time, we were at a response rate of 67%. In terms of next steps for the Census Commission, we are continuing to follow up with various community groups. To our Anchorage convening, community convening that we held on February of this year, we, in July of this year, we released an op-ed to talk about, just entitled, "What Positive Change for Alaska: Stand and Be Counted", to really address the history of the census, and to really hone in on its confidentiality and the purpose of the census in terms of funding to our states for critical services. Our continued strategy is along that wise, in making sure that we continue in partnership with grassroots organizations that have built trust with our hard-to-count communities to be able to include all voices in our count. Direct communications, again, reminders of confidentiality, and the new deadline of September 30th. At one point in time, the census deadline was moved to the end of October, and it has been changed to September 30th. So we want to definitely remind people of that. So we have been sending direct communications to grassroots groups to remind them of the new date. And on September 4th, we also provided an update on the census and even the impact of COVID-19 in Mayor Berkowitz' Anchorage noon address. And that concludes my report, barring any questions. And that concludes my report, barring any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt. I don't see any questions. I'll go ahead, give the Assembly a quick update on this. So as the Assembly knows, I always enjoy talking about the 2020 census and really appreciate the work of both Ms. Hunt as one of the co-chairs of the Anchorage Complete Counts Commission, as well as the school district and all of the work that they have been doing in collaboration with us to enhance our count. I guess the only other addition that I have is later, probably likely next week, Assemblymembers will be getting an email with some suggested ideas to increase community engagement around the 2020 census, including social media strategies and some other ideas on engaging our community. And I would hope that the school district, the school board in particular, would be interested in engaging in those same types of strategies so that we can, through the remainder of this month, increase engagement around the census. But that is all that I had. And again, thanks to Ms. Hunt and the school district. Okay, seeing no one in the queue on this topic, we'll go ahead, move on to the next topic. So Item 7C on our agenda, ASD Strategic Planning. And the school district will be presenting on this one.
Thank you. Just wanted to give a quick update and then I am going to also invite Board Member Marsette, who is the Chair of our Ad Hoc Committee for our strategic plan, to also join the conversation as well. We have our current, our draft goals and guardrails, which I do believe were sent out with the white paper to all the Assemblymembers. We did just have a meeting, a work session on September 8th where we went through them again, talked a little bit more broadly about our timeline, especially given, you know, the current pandemic that we're in and, you know, how to measure and monitor and stuff like that. And so the goals are in the white paper and, like I say, you have the attachments as well. We are still working on getting that final hard draft ready to put out to the community so that we can do some feedback sessions with the community on their thoughts and where they are. And looking forward to getting this, you know, put out and done so that we can really get into the hard work of what we need, we're all here to do. Member Marsette, did you have anything that you wanted to add to the conversation? And in terms of timing or answering any questions for any Assemblymembers?
Certainly. One of the things I'll mention is in the past, we've really had, I believe, in the last five years, six or seven goals, and we have really focused on three very distinct and smart measurable goals that we're going to focus on in this district. And I know that you have the white paper, but of course, one of those is reading. And then we have end-term goals below that. And we're saying that the percentage of third graders proficient in reading will increase from 40 to 80%. So given that, and then we have a math goal and we have a career-ready goal because one of the things we heard from the public is that our students need to be not only career-ready, but life-ready. So we're looking at ways such as financial management, things like that, to help our students be more successful after graduation. The one thing that I will talk in, President Vekalas touched on this a little bit, is we will be expanding this. We were looking at 20, school year 2020 to '25 for our five-year goal. We are going to be expanding that out to 2026. And the reason is because of the pandemic and because of the reason that we are where we are and doing online, some of our testing is not available. I'm not sure we're going to be doing PEAKs or some of the other testing and those are some of the things we use to measure our students. So that will be coming later, probably in the spring or fall of 2021. Therefore, we needed to expand that five-year goal to make sure that we are looking at our students in the right light and finding out exactly where we're at with this. One of the other things I did want to mention too is this year's a little different. We have developed guardrails. And guardrails are simply working with great council city schools. This is one of the things that they recommended or presented to us. And as a board, we agreed to adopt these. And a guardrail is an operational action or class of actions. It's usually strategic, not tactical, but the superintendent may not use or allow in pursuit of the district's student outcome goals. So we have come up with four and I'm not going to read those right now because we're still working on these. But one of them is around equity. Another one is around culturally responsive and mental health in our schools. So those are things that we're looking at also. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
Great, thank you, School Board Member Marsette. I do have a question from Assemblymember Quinn Davidson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, President Vekalas and Board Member Marsette. That's helpful. You know, I think the reason this first got on to the agenda many quarterly meetings ago was some concerns I had around equity and particularly in the charter school system. For instance, as you know, and I think all members know too, all Assemblymembers, a lot of the charter schools don't provide free lunch, free breakfast, there's no busing. And so that, you know, sort of automatically excludes a certain population, particularly poor people, people who don't have flexible schedules, can't pick their kids up at 3:00, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm just wondering, you know, I spoke with Dr. Bishop in detail about this probably nine months ago. She and I had a great brainstorm, brought a constituent along with me who has experience in education, and then was told that you all were doing a strategic planning session in March or April and that you would start to address those and come up with some real ideas to ease that disparity in this system. I know that COVID has, I mean, you all have been so busy, so I totally get that. But where are we in moving forward specifically on addressing the inequities in the charter system? Thanks.
So one of our guardrails is superintendent will not leave student groups unrepresented in choice programs. We do have several charter schools that are going to be renewing their application and we are looking at possibly policy or something else as a board to ensure that maybe the students, that a portion of the neighborhood is part of that lottery process. And that would open it up to some of these choice or some of these groups that are underrepresented if we can open it up to the neighborhood and provide a percentage of those students a place in those schools. So one of the things we're looking at, there may be some others. Maybe Dr. Bishop has something more to add, but as a board, that's what we're looking at.
Thank you, Member Marsette. I'll just add to that. Certainly, there's many different strategies that we are considering for expanding that. So the board has set that direction through their guardrail and administration is working through the detail of policy as well as charter school statute to understand what are the provisions that we could do to change that scenario or change those percentages. Again, a charter is an agreement, a contract, if you will, between the academic policy committee of the charter itself, which acts as a school board, if you will, of that program, is a contract between that board and the anchor school board. And the provisions under that are really governed by the statutory requirements for what needs to go into a charter. To make some of these changes, we're talking about those charters, as they come up for being renewed, would have to begin to look at some of the options that they offer, similar to you had mentioned food. We presently only have one of our charter schools offering a food service program. We would, when we negotiate the new charter, we would put the types of tactical and strategic moves and language that we would to start to increase that. So the goal or the, you know, the bar has been set and then we need to work through the many different idiosyncrasies of the law and policy to be able to get those made. Member Marsette mentioned one of those, simply expanding and having a neighborhood having to be a part of that charter school could assist. Utilizing, we certainly have busing for individual students, but we do not do individual pickups. You know, perhaps we could do pickups around the city in different spots where parents can get their kids a certain spot and then bring them to the charter school. So there's different options we're considering. But again, primarily, they need to operate from the board level to the APC as well in getting those in our contract. And we have a director that works, supervises all the charters and is an expert in the policy and will assist us in doing that.
May I follow up, Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you to you both. Those are really specific things we can do and I appreciate the description of the process. You know, Dr. Bishop and I had spoken, whenever that was, about specifically including in the contract renewals that charter programs needed to provide free, have a free lunch and free breakfast program. As far as I understand it, that would cost the district nothing, but would increase access to these schools. So I am really hopeful that that will be included and I'd love to see updates on that as we move along. I recognize busing is more challenging, but I think the idea of having more folks from the neighborhood and having free breakfast and lunch would make a really big difference. And I just appreciate your guys' commitment to making this happen.
Great, thank you, Assemblymember Quinn Davidson. Next I have Assemblymember Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I appreciate this conversation a great deal in terms of equity because I think it is such a challenging concept. And, you know, I'm glad Ms. Quinn Davidson kind of kicked this off, you know, in talking about services and that, but I kind of want to talk about, more about the academic end of things. And I think there's so much to be said for how equity is kind of a perception. It's a concept that all of us probably have a different, a different way of defining. So I was wondering if you have tried to kind of define what you think equity is, what that goal actually is? Because I'm thinking academically, you know, we do treat students differently and probably would be perceived as being unequal, depending on their needs. You know, and to a certain extent, that's really what you have to do is some kids, we know, I mean, if you just look at special education, some kids really do have a need for additional services just to try to get them up to par, you know, up to grade level. And then other kids are given, you know, gifted kids are given extra opportunities, you know, and ways to just kind of increase that or use that level of ability that they have to try to really help them have more options and more challenges in their academic success. So I'm just wondering if, how you really try to deal with that, knowing that there's always going to be somebody in the mix that says, "That's not fair." So have you kind of tried to come to grips with some kind of way of addressing this concept of equality? Thank you. Thank you. The board president has asked me to share some information. And certainly, I have a new, we kind of reformed some positions in the district and moved around some job responsibilities. So we have an equity and compliance office and we have an equity senior director. But before I get there, I just want to, I'm going to ask her to speak a little bit on the definition. But it's really more than a definition. And what we look at too are, how do we know that in the measures, what measures do we also use to know that we're moving towards equity? And she can share some of those things as well. But just to give a mind's eye, if we were to take the demographics of our schools, of our city, we should look in those individual classrooms of what's offered to have the numbers that match the student groups that we have. So if we have, whether it's for an honors class, an AP class, an Algebra I class, whatever it might be, are the numbers of the overall general population in percentages matching those students that are interested in taking coursework? What do they look like? Are they disproportional? And that's the legal term that they use at the state level, the disproportionality that we look at, certainly for what you mentioned, special education. We also are taking a look at that to see if anything is disproportional in our system that may have been set up systematically. So whether it's discipline, sports programs, music programs, courses, different courses at different things. We have a project going on right now that is an AP project that brings equity to our AP classes. We started a pilot, I believe, in four high schools, working on that. So those are, again, some of the strategies we're using. But as far as the definition, we had Sonia Hunt work on that and if she could chime in in regard to that. So we have a, what does it look like? What's the definition? But also, how do we measure and know that that's occurring?
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Just as an update, we spent the better part of the beginning of last school year really talking to teachers, principals, student advisory in various even cultural groups to include the multicultural education concerns advisory on defining equity. That work stopped a bit or was halted at the onset of the pandemic and we look forward to resuming that. And what was interesting is that the themes that came up, of course, were, as it is the basis across the nation in terms of staff demographics, a real concern or need for emphasis placed on even our ELL students. And that was primarily what came from the student advisory. In terms of furthering the work on definitions, one of the things, some of the things that we looked at also was the achievement gap. We even looked at participation, as Dr. Bishop mentioned, on gifted education to include the AP Equity Program that we have going on right now at East High School, Bartlett High School, service in South High Schools, for starters, to ensure that every student has access to equitable AP courses. We looked at school culture. We looked at curriculum, again, staff demographics and disproportionality. Also, cultural responsive teaching and curriculum. This work is equity, as we always say, it's an adaptive challenge. And our goal is to meet it more than with technical solutions. It will take some technical solutions, but just really digging deep into our systems in the Anchorage School District to make sure that all of our students have access. And so that's where we currently are.
Thank you, Sonia.
Great, thank you. Did you have any follow-up, Ms. Kennedy?
No, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Ms. Hunt. Thank you, Dr. Bishop.
Thank you. Next I have Assemblymember Zalatelle.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question on equity is around the disproportionate impacts of the discipline policy on students of color and students with disabilities. The data is ASD's own. So I'd like to know if the board addressed that in its strategic planning and what specific guidance it might be giving to the district to address this because these students kind of get a double whammy in that they're being, the disproportionality of the discipline being imposed. And then often that discipline is more severe and requires them actually to be out of the educational environment when we are in that in-person learning setting. So I'd love to hear an update on that front. Thank you.
If I could possibly speak to that a little bit, I've been following this very closely. A little background, and I'm sure some of you have heard this, but probably about five years ago, a group and I met at my house every Sunday to propose a white paper at that time to Mr. Graff. And it was on our suspension policy and what we could do differently. Because at that time, boys of color and children with disabilities were being suspended three times more than any other population in our school. And it was very evident, especially when we started getting the data. That was presented to the public and everyone else. I looked at it very closely just this last couple of months. And what I'm seeing is those suspensions are going down. What we're seeing now is an increase in Hawaiian Pacific. Sorry, Pacific. Hawaiian Pacific population and still our disability. And I, I know all of our board members, I'm sure, watch this very closely. And I do see progress. I've seen progress within some of our schools by setting up. Timeout rooms, giving our students a chance to deescalate, not just suspending them or that progression suspension. We are not there yet, but I know that I'm committed. I know that the district's committed. And there are things that we need to continue to do and to improve, but. If you've looked at the data recently, the numbers are coming down. There are some schools, and I won't mention them. Where there are still some challenges, but. It is being watched and it is being addressed. And as you know, change does not come quickly. It's taken five years to get where we are today. And zero tolerance. Is a very rooted into our school and we need to do more restorative justice, which we've been. Our staff has been attending, uh, training on for the last three years. And we are, as a district, I feel, and as a board, are addressing this, even if it's not something that's in the forefront that you see all the time. But I do see our numbers coming down. It doesn't mean that we're there by any means, but we are working on it.
May I ask a follow up, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, what I hear though is a lot of things that place the onus on the students. Um, and I guess I wanted to know from a policy direction perspective from the board to, um, the administration. If it was addressed in the strategic planning. I guess, I appreciate if there's work being done in the background. I feel like this work needs to be done at the forefront. And be a part of the public conversation about how our students are educated in the district. So I didn't know if there were any. Guardrails that will be developed around. On, um, what we know is the disproportionate impacts of discipline on students of color and students with disability.
Yeah, what we do have is, um, I mean, we do have the, uh, student groups unrepresented choice programs. That doesn't really address the policy. However. Margot Bellamy and I are working on policy around equity. As far as suspensions and maybe what we can do a little differently. That is something that we've been tasked with and that we will start meeting on to hopefully propose. A policy to the district that they can develop into ARs. And we can start moving forward in this in a more public way.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next I have School Board Member Bellamy.
Yes, thank you. I, I appreciate the conversation and, uh, we, uh, the thing that's missing in all of this. For me. Is our policy. We as a board have not yet had the opportunity. To meet as a board. To discuss instructional equity. Uh, or, uh, the ways that we can become, make our system. Anti-racist. You cannot deal, in my, in my experience, you cannot deal with. The equity component unless we also deal with. The impact of race within our own system. And so I am proud that we are, um. Beginning conversations around race, around. The impact of racism within our system. How does it impact our curriculum and what we offer? Those are the, those are the crucial conversations and they're not going to be easy ones. But, uh, we, we have to start somewhere. So at our next governance meeting. We will be providing, the superintendent is doing, um, the best that she can. In the absence of policy, we do not have an equity policy. We do not have a systemic definition and understanding around equity or anti-racism. We just don't have it. Not in our current body of policy. Years ago, we had that. We had inclusion, diversity, equity, uh, the challenges of it, the benefits of it. That, that has been replaced with a, a, a different policy. And I'm not saying that's bad. I'm just saying that. We are doing a lot of activities in our district. We've got to do some systemic work. And, uh, so with, uh. In conversations that I've, that I've had with community, my own experience, conversations with. Dina Mitchell and I have spent a lot of time talking about various pieces of our policy. Of a proposed policy. So at our next governance committee. Member Mitchell and myself will be presenting. A, an anti-racism and instructional equity policy. So that the board can begin to have these very difficult conversations. We've got to move beyond activities and into systemic work. And I think it has to start with our policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Bellamy. Next we have Assembly Member Allard. Assembly Member Allard.
I apologize. Thank you. So, um, I'm Hispanic. My daughters are Hispanic. And I don't believe there is systemic racism within our school district. If there is, that would fall on the shoulders of all of our teachers. That would fall on the shoulders of our school board and our administration. And I think we should move forward with evaluating part of what we would, some folks are saying. It is. The skin color of the children and that is why they're being disciplined more. And I would like to challenge that, what are these children doing? That may have them misbehaving? And why are they being pulled out of classrooms, suspended or on detention? And I just want to make sure that we don't continue to promote division. Within our school district. Because I know plenty of children of color. To include my daughters and fellow friends. That children are doing very well and they're succeeding. So maybe it could be other things going on within that home that are affecting the children's behaviors. And I for one, won't use my race, my color or anything as an excuse to be. Given extra privilege too because of my skin color. I'm not going to use that as an excuse of why I'm not where I'm at today or why my children aren't going to be successful. And I do agree, this is going to be a very hard conversation. I do believe it still needs to be addressed, but I just want to make sure that it's being addressed to unite us. And not divide us as a community. Because like I said, I have a very hard time believing that throughout our entire district. That teachers are discriminating, that the administration for Anchorage School District is discriminating. And that the persons who make all the decision are on the school board are discriminating. And when it comes to equality and certain, I, I guess for children who are underprivileged. We do have children in Eagle River, quite a few that are underprivileged and I'd like us. As Eagle River to be able to be included in helping our children out here as underprivileged too. Thank you.
Thank you, Assembly Member Allard. Seeing no further discussion on this topic, we'll go ahead and move on in our agenda. Actually, apologies. Uh, I have School Board Member Marsette.
Yes, I, I'd like to respond a little bit to that. Um. I think what we're seeing and what we're looking at in the school district is. Behaviors and how do we change those behaviors? You don't change behaviors through suspension. You find out what the challenges are in the home and a lot of those homes are in low socio-economic neighborhoods. Which could include, um. Children of, of color. And I'm not saying that necessarily that we are discriminating, but we're not addressing the behaviors. And so that's how we reduce the suspensions. We reduce the suspensions by meeting the needs of the children. So you don't suspend them. You make sure that we have someone that can mentor them and follow them through and find out and talk to them. Not just give them a piece of paper and says you're out of school for three days and the next time it's five days and the next time it's nine days. Those are the things, you know, we're working on. And when you see that and we change the behaviors, you'll see fewer and fewer. Suspensions. And that's also with disability. Disability is just about educating. Our, uh, staff and principals and everyone else. As a child with disability. My student was, uh, my child was suspended 21 times in ninth grade. And it was because we've, we've come so far from there, but it's because of the. Lack of understanding of students with disability and the misconception that. Not being able to do it is refusing to do it. So I, I just want to make that clear that what we're looking at is the child as a whole. We're, we're not even looking at color. We're looking at meeting that child's needs, whoever they are. And helping them change that behavior. And there are many ways that we can do that. And that's what as a school board member I'm looking for.
Thank you, Board Member Marsette. Uh, next I have Board Member Holloman.
Yes, I just wanted to follow up and echo a lot of what, uh, Member Marsette just said. As someone that spent, uh, quite a few years in the classroom. Most of these suspensions and detentions and whatnot originate from classroom behavior. Where the teacher can't handle the behavior in the room. That's always the first thing you try to do. But every teacher's got a responsibility to all the other students in the room to continue instruction. At a time when we could afford more staffing, we were moving in the right direction. For a long time, middle schools had in-school suspension, uh, which was kind of like structured to be punishment. And we redid that to be instruction. Where the person handling in-school suspension. Didn't just give them work and try to make them be quiet in a kind of a deprived atmosphere. But actually worked with students about the behaviors and issues. That caused them to, to be at that level and, uh. With the goal of altering their behavior when they went back in class. It, it just comes down to funding at that point. We're trying to keep our class numbers low, which means we're trying to focus resources. Into classroom teachers. Classroom teachers are dealing with too many kids, we feel. And unfortunately, that kind of lowers the standard for where you might exit a kid from the classroom to go to the office. Or suffer some consequence. And so it. Unfortunately, it is resources that there are most kids that participate in a, in an okay way or they're only mildly disruptive or they. Change their behavior when someone notes to them or asks them to. But there are some kids that can't or won't. And, and at some point, that's kind of where the, the. The escalation starts in terms of what we deal with them. But the vast majority of teachers want to keep kids in the room if they possibly can. But unfortunately, we need more staffing to make it happen like we'd like to.
Thank you, Board Member Holloman. I'm just looking at our time. We have about 15 minutes left and I'd like to. Save as much as we can for final audience participation. So I'll go through, uh, the two members we have left in the queue. Assembly Member Constance.
Yes, thank you. Our educational system is amazing and it has, uh, the great opportunity in it to build imagination. Creativity, but I'm really grateful that the school district isn't imaginative and pretending that issues of equity don't exist. And so I'm really grateful for your hard work and determination to ensure that our education system is equitable. And in particular, for those who the system just has a way of, uh, putting in a corner and not addressing their needs as effectively as possible. So. Thank you. I'm filled with gratitude for your hard work on this topic.
Thank you, Assembly Member Constance. Uh, Assembly Member LaFrance.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, um, thanks to everyone for this conversation. Think that issues, um, and conversations about identity can be very complicated and very personal. And most of us who are perceived as white oftentimes don't see the biases because we don't experience it. And I think it's very important, um, just for all of us to listen to others' experience and I, you know, I'm saying this as a. A person, a white person and to listen without judgment. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Assembly Member LaFrance. Seeing no one else in the queue, we'll go ahead and move on in our agenda to, uh, item number eight, schedule of upcoming joint meetings. So we have, uh, two upcoming joint meetings. Uh, we have the December 4th meeting. Which the school district will be hosting and then we have. The March 5th, 2021 meeting, which the, um, assembly will be hosting. And during that meeting, uh, we will have a, or what is usually a very robust discussion about the Anchorage School District budget. As. Was stated earlier in a earlier discussion, uh, I will be working with President Vekalis on, uh, adjusting the times. Of these two meetings per the will of these bodies. So, uh, you will likely see different, uh, notices being sent out in the near future. So with that, uh, unless there is any objection, I'd like to, um, shift the agenda to take up final audience participation first. Before we go on to member comments. So I'll go ahead and. See if there is any objection. Okay, so hearing no objection. We'll go ahead, move on to final audience participation. I think we have a few individuals here who would like to, uh, to speak. Uh, and then if we have time, we'll go back to member comments. Um, so, um, we'll go ahead and do, uh. Just because I'm not sure exactly how many individuals here would like to speak, we'll go ahead and do two minutes per individual to try to get as many voices as possible. So if you would like to speak, it is star six to unmute yourself. And then, uh, please introduce yourself and I will start your timer.
Hello. Uh, I pressed star six. Can anybody hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. I'm sorry, are you still with us?
Okay, so now can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
I can't hear. Okay, because I couldn't hear you for a minute. So I'm calling on my iPhone. And that's one issue that I have. Um, I tried to tune into this meeting from a link sent to me from. Uh, Mr. Rivera and also from the ASD School Board. Um, and Jamie Allard. All three of those links. Did not, it, it said Safari cannot open this. So I'm not able to, the only way I could, uh, attend was through a phone number and a conference ID number that. Jamie Allard had sent to me. But that's kind of a separate issue, just bringing that attention to you, um, that. I, I'm not able to participate in this public meeting. Through those links. Um, but the bigger issue that I have with the reopening of the schools, I'm a physical therapist. And, um, I see, I, I've seen an increase, an uptick in patients with. Headaches, uh, light vertigo, dizziness. Skin issues, bacterial infections under the masks. So my question is, and I see an adult, um, orthopedic population. So my question is, in a pediatric population, it's kids as young as five, being in masks, um, four to six hours a day. What are the ramifications, uh, physical ramifications of that? And, uh, the, my patients that are having problems are, it seems to be they're wearing masks about 20 hours a week. So I know that was discussed a long time ago, but I don't know how this phone thing works, uh, because this is all new to me. So I hope you guys were able to hear my question.
Thank you for, uh, your participation. Um, we did get the question and, um, I'm sorry, uh, I, I was asked, uh, can you please state your name again, please? For the record.
Yes, my, yes, my name is Elaine Haddon.
Okay, uh, thank you, ma'am. All right, so I think your question, uh. All right, so I think the question, so we'll go ahead and keep going with audience participation, and then we will get to any questions with the remainder of our time to participate. Again, it is star six to unmute yourself. Again, I'll open it up. It is star six to unmute yourself if you would like to participate. And then I guess to the clerk, did we have anyone else signed up for final audience participation?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I'm not hearing.
Chair.
Yes, Ms. Allard? Ms. Allard? I'm not sure if we're having some technical difficulties here. But I guess I'll just make the call a third and final time if there are any other members of the public who would like to participate in our final audience participation period. It is star six to unmute yourself. And then you can go ahead and speak up and introduce yourself, and I will start your time.
Chair, this is Assemblywoman Allard. Could you hear me by any chance?
I did hear you, and I responded, but I did not get a response.
Oh, I'm sorry. I know that there's a gentleman by the name of Jared Dunbar, and I don't know if he's having difficulty. But if we can give him about a couple more seconds, but if not, I understand if you have to move on.
Sure, yeah, I've given several opportunities. I'm happy to just give another few seconds to see if someone else would like to unmute and participate. Okay, I'm not hearing anyone else. So I guess we can go through member comments. And then if someone else does chime in, we will go ahead and make time for that. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and try to multitask here, go through the list of members to see if there are any final comments. I'm just going to go down the list as presented, and if we can keep our comments brief, please. So first, I have Assemblymember Allard, if you had any final comments.
No, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And next, I have Board Member Bellamy.
No comments, thank you.
Sorry, multitasking isn't working. Thank you. Next, I have Assemblymember Constance.
Yeah, thank you. Just to all of the members of the school board, you know, we are leading and policymaking in the most interesting times, hopefully, in our lives. And I am grateful to be working back-to-back with you to ensure that we get our kids educated and we keep our community healthy. So again, thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Assemblymember Dunbar.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Chris beat me to it. I was going to thank both the school board and the school administration, and of course, any teachers that might be listening, for really putting in a lot of extra effort during this really challenging time. And you're dealing with a whole nother aspect of policy that the Assembly is typically separated from. And looking from afar, it seems to be among the most complicated issues we've ever faced. So thank you for all the work you're doing.
Thank you. Next, I have Board Member Holloman.
I don't.
Thank you. Next, I have Assemblymember Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I just want to relay my thanks to the school board and the superintendent and staff as well. I will say that I was actually very relieved to hear that the FEMA insurance thing has been resolved. I know that's a relief in a lot of different ways. So that was really good news to hear. So thank you for sharing that. And I just want to say, too, that I, you know, I certainly appreciate the school board and superintendent and staff and their work. I know the challenges never end. You never quite get to where you want to be in terms of improvement. So it's constant, and I get that. So I just thank you for that. And one of the things I do want to say, too, just in terms of this meeting, you know, even though we meet quarterly, which is fairly often enough, and I know all of the board members are accessible anytime we need to have a question answered. But I will say that these conversations really do help me in dealing with my constituents, because the school board is not really elected by districts the way the Assembly members are. It really does allow me to share some information that I think is helpful with my constituents that I probably wouldn't otherwise have. So I appreciate these meetings. And whenever it is that we figure out when we're going to have them, I think we need to just continue them either way. So, and I guess by code, we have to, but anyway. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Assemblymember Kennedy. Assemblymember LaFrance.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let me echo my colleagues' comments. And thanks to Dr. Bishop, President Vekalas, board members, teachers, and district administration for all your hard work in getting the virtual learning going and for all the issues you've been dealing with and adaptations to make everything work and keeping people safe. Definitely very challenging times. And I know that everyone is doing the very best they can do. I do have big concerns about financial hardships ahead for our community, especially with the funding formula and school bond debt reimbursements and clearly other big issues concerning equity exists as well. So again, thanks to all and to the community members as well who are seeking greater levels of participation. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Assemblymember LaFrance. Next, I have Board Member Marsette.
Yes, I just, first of all, that I want to reciprocate the thank yous. Thank you to the Assembly and to you, Chair Vekalas. You guys have been nothing but supportive of the district in many ways. And just participating in these meetings and hearing you and your support, I want to thank you for that. But the other thing that's most important on my mind right now is universal pre-K. And I know that we've been looking at that. But when we talk about equity, there is nothing more equitable than having universal pre-K for all our students and children in Anchorage and, of course, the state. But as a community, I would hope that the municipality and working with the district and the community, that that is something we can accomplish. There, our children are coming into kindergarten so deficient, and we're spending so much time catching them up, that that pre-K is so important. And I really hope that as mutual school board and Assembly in the community, that we can facilitate this and get it going.
Thank you. Next, I have Board Member Mitt.
Thank you, President Rivera. I want to echo what Assemblymember Kennedy spoke about. It really, I so appreciate the discussions that we have. I very, very much appreciate the Assembly members supporting us. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, I thought somebody was saying something. I very much appreciate Assembly members representing issues that the district is facing when you're in the community. I also very much appreciate your support of the district and of our students and understanding the critical importance of public education when it comes to looking at ways to support the mental health of our students, looking at ways that you can provide, excuse me, additional revenue to the district. It's just critical. And also raising these issues and not letting them go of equity and restorative justice and access. Those are really vital issues that we all need to figure out ways to address. I very much also appreciate Member Marsette's mention of universal pre-K. And I would, you know, I'm a broken record. I would like to take that even further back. And if, I know that there are many Assembly members who echo this, that if we could have really high-quality childcare to support the parents in our community, it really starts at birth. And the students who have that strong exposure to ideas and concepts and vocabulary and interaction with adults who care about them and pay attention to them starting at birth, those are the kids who come into kindergarten ready. And if we could get to that for our entire community, we would see just seismic shifts. So thank you all. It's been a very challenging time for everybody. I know that you, as Assembly members, are working 24/7. And I very, very much appreciate everything you do and your strong support of our school district.
Thank you. I failed to take notice of the time. So I'd like to see if we can extend by five minutes to 12:05. So can I get a motion to do so?
Move to extend by five minutes.
Seconded by Quinn Davidson.
Seconded by Assemblymember Quinn Davidson. And that was Assemblymember Peterson who made the main motion. Is there any opposition to that? Okay, then we're extended by five minutes, which at this point is 12:06. So we'll go ahead, finish up the member comments. And I believe we do have one written comment, which I will read into the record. So next, I have Assemblymember Peterson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I want to thank the school board and the school administration for all the informational updates they gave us today. And I also agree with Ms. Kennedy that the information that Mr. Roth presented about FEMA was really good news. And hopefully, that reimbursement will take place and we can get those buildings improved out in Eagle River so they can get reopened. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Assemblymember Quinn Davidson.
Just to echo the thanks to the school district and everyone who's been working so hard. Thank you.
Hi. Thank you. Hello? Next. Hi, I'm still going down the list for member comments. So I will, if you are a school board member, I'll get to you in a minute. Next, I have Assemblymember Zalatell. I don't know if she's still with us. I think she said she was going to be leaving. Okay, it appears so. So then, next, I have School Board Member Donley.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Yeah, I didn't have any particular remarks at this time.
Thank you. And then, next, I have School Board Member Hildy.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to take a second to highlight the good work that the Anchorage Public Library is doing, and thank you guys for that. They have been going above and beyond through, you know, we already have summer slides. Now we have all this time away from school that children experience. And they have really just been pouring into our community, finding clever, creative ways to support kids. I mean, really, in an emotionally way, to see my children be cared for and excited by what they're doing to support families is very meaningful to me. So I just wanted to thank you all for that excellent work happening.
Thank you. Next, I'll go to President Vekalas.
Thank you. Again, to just echo some of the previous comments, thank you to both bodies for, you know, quarterly, always coming to the table with, you know, communication and collaboration. It's very much appreciated on all sides for the information flow that goes back and forth and look forward to continuing to do it, no matter, you know, what day or what time, coming to the table to do what's best for our community. While I believe that none of this is easy, I also believe that none of this is impossible when we do work together. So thank you to everybody, and that is it for me.
Thank you. And then, just one question. I again want to echo all of my thanks for the great work that the school district has done and various community partners have done to help our students, which is, I think, is the whole reason why we're here. Also want to thank the staff who made this live event possible in these virtual times. It definitely takes much more staff power to make these things happen. So thanks to all of the clerk staff and others who assisted in making this happen. So I do want to read one comment that we got that was published. So I'll just read it verbatim. Quote, "I'd like to thank Dr. Bishop and everyone on the school board. My daughter is black, and she had a great experience in 12 years in the ASD, an AP student and a star athlete. She got scholarship to Colorado Mesa and graduated with a BSN. She was afforded a great opportunity by our ASD." Thank you for that comment. With that, our time is up, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, sorry. Hey, fix, sorry, that was my comment, and I was kind of having some issues earlier chiming in. And I know we're kind of pressed for time. Could I have 30 seconds, or?
Sure, I can entertain that, yeah, if you can make a brief comment, please.
I'll be super, super short. That was my comment there. My daughter was black, and she had a great time in the school district. She was very successful, many AP classes, high GPA, and she's been great. I think one comment that someone made about mentoring instead of suspensions, I think that's important. I was a troubled kid in school. I had a lot of home issues. And so did a lot of my friends that we hung out with. So I think there's some issues at home that can lead to some of that stuff that's going on in the school as far as disciplinary issues or actions that the school wants to take. But I think as a whole, for my daughter, she just had a great experience. She, you know, you have people that have issues and people that discriminate. But as a whole, in the school district, all of her school teachers were great. I mean, I didn't run into a lot of issues myself. So anyways, I just wanted to chime in there, too, because I know it's a topic of discussion. I just wanted to share my experience and my family's experience.
Thank you. Confirming for the record.
Michaela Winchester.
Mr. Constance, thank you. So wanted to confirm for the record, is this Mr. Jared Dunbar?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great, thank you. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved. Okay, by Assemblymember Constance, we are adjourned. Thanks.